And get started. We'll begin with the roll call.
Councilman Daley is absent. Councilman Duper?
Present.
Councilman Popescu? Mayor Pretend Free Leonard?
Here.
Mayor Rigsby?
Here.
Thank you, we have a call.
Sounds like we have a quorum. Okay. Join me in standing for our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you once again for your leadership of our community, for your oppression upon us, how to lead our fellow citizens and to serve their needs. Help us to make the right decisions for the sake of Amen. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, a one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor, but I would like to introduce our new captain, Captain Chris Fisher. He will be our new captain for City of Loma Linda.
Good evening, everyone, mayor, council. Yes, my name is Chris Fisher. I am a captain with the Sheriff's Department. I was assigned to Central Station when Captain Hector Gomez retired. I've been with Sheriff's Department for about 25 years, worked a variety of assignments, but most importantly, this Central Station is where I worked as a deputy sheriff many years ago, worked about eight years at this station, so I am familiar with the city of Loma Linda. My wife is an RN at the hospital and my daughter was born here, so quite familiar with the city and I look forward to working with all of you. And I'll pass my card around a little later so that you all have my contact information. Should you have any questions, concerns, want to reach out to me, I'm here to work with you. Thank you.
Yes, welcome. Okay, this is the opportunity for the public to speak on any items not on the agenda. Is there anyone who would wish to speak? Okay, no takers, then we'll move ahead with our agenda. We'll start with our proclamations. Item number one, the first one is Child Abuse Prevention Month. Every year, we renew this. Proclamation, April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I'll read some pertinent whereases. Whereas in recognition of the right of all children to receive the care, protection, and guidance a family provides, the right to be free from harm and to have their physical, emotional, and educational needs met, the state and federal governments have proclaimed April as Child Abuse Prevention Month for the purpose of promoting community involvement in preventing child abuse. In 2018, more than 32,000 children were referred to the San Bernardino County Department of Children's Services for suspected child abuse and neglect. And with the blue ribbon as the international symbol for child abuse prevention, the San Bernardino County Children's Network, in partnership with the county Board of Supervisors, the member agencies of the county's Children's Policy Council, and the Child Abuse Prevention Committee have planned a blue ribbon media campaign. Therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Loma Linda, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And we have Jeanette Zito here from the Children's Network to accept the proclamation. So come forward and get your proclamation. I need to actually sign it. There you go. Thank you. And you can speak if you like. Yes.
Thank you so much, Mayor Rigsby and the Loma Linda City Council for recognizing that April is Child Abuse Awareness Month, and thank you for doing this year after year. As you said, with some of the statistics, there are 32,000 cases per year of child abuse. And child abuse comes in many forms. It could be physical, emotional, sexual, and neglect. We at Children's Network like to recognize a study, the ACEs Study, and that study demonstrates that children who experience severe adversity and maltreatment are far more likely to experience negative health behaviors, negative health and behavioral health outcomes later in life. Abuse, neglect, and neglect not only leads to communities that are less healthy, but also less productive and less safe. I'd just like to remind everyone that it's always important to report if you see child abuse, and the easiest way to do that, there is a hotline, but in our county, we have two-on-one to call for resources, but they also can take a child abuse report over the phone. So it's pretty easy to just dial two-on-one. And then I'd also like to just remember to bring awareness by wearing blue. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Our next proclamation is also a renewal every year. DMV Donate Life Month, also for April. Whereas organ, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as the greatest expression of compassion to those in need, and each year millions of lives are saved and healed by donors of organ, tissue, marrow, and blood. And whereas with more than 113,000 individuals nationwide and more than 21,000 in California currently are on the national organ transplant waitlist, whereas more than 600,000 units of blood per year are needed to meet the need in California, whereas a single individual's donation of heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives, and whereas the spirit of giving and decision to donate are not restricted by age or medical condition, over 15 million Californians have signed up with the Donate Life California Registry, whereas California residents can sign up with that registry when applying or renewing their driver's license. Therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Loma Linda, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2019, DMV Donate Life California Month. And to receive this proclamation is Ina Strickland. So come forward. You're welcome. Yes, you can speak.
Mayor Rigsby and council members, I want to thank you for recognizing once again April as Donate Life Month. I want to encourage everyone to become an organ donor. You can do that through the DMV, of course, but also through donatelifecalifornia.org or donevidaCalifornia.org. I am a living donor. I donated a kidney 32 years ago to my daughter. She's 35 now. She's on her third kidney transplant, and if it wasn't for someone deciding to become an organ donor, I wouldn't have her because she had transplant number two at Loma Linda and transplant number three at UCLA. So I want to encourage everyone to become an organ and tissue and eye donor. Also, we have our run walk on April the 27th at Cal State Fullerton, so I want to encourage everyone to participate. We have over 12,000 participants. Many are donors, recipients, nurses, doctors. So I would like to encourage you and the public to please come and support us. Thank you very much.
Yes.
And, you know, this, if I thought you were going to be here later, I would, I would wait, but you have no way of knowing this, but two months ago, I unexpectedly lost my 28-year-old son.
Sorry.
And he was a tissue donor. And when there was a fairly lengthy interview questionnaire that I had to go through with a representative of your organization, and it, they were wonderful.
Yes.
But at the end, I said, are we going to find out what tissue or organs were donated and anything more? And I was told, absolutely, you will.
You should get a letter.
We got a letter, but it looks, it, we got a letter, I'm guessing, a month ago or thereabouts, but it looked like a form letter. It didn't say anything that, you know, "thank you" and inserted his name, said nothing about what was donated.
My understanding is, and I'm a volunteer, I've been a volunteer for 10 years, that the staff, that there is a way to reach out to the families, to let, let them know what organs or tissue was provided and how many people it has impacted. I know from other volunteers that today I was on an event and the mother of, the grandmother of 18 months old, they found out that the heart, liver, and one kidney went to different people, so that is made available to the families. I don't know how long it takes, but that is made available.
I mean, we're still in the grieving process, and I don't know how much it would help, but it would help a little bit at least.
Yes, I understand.
If we had some sense for what good his organs and tissue did. And so just, I, I've still got the letter, so just call, or am I going to get a machine?
There should be a phone number. I don't know if there was a contact person, but also the aftercare person that you were provided during the process, nobody provided you an aftercare person?
We got a, we got a letter. That's all I've received.
It should have been from aftercare, and usually they do follow up with the families. I, I can find out more information for you, but I, I don't have the information with me. I would have to contact.
Sure, no, I understand. I didn't expect you to.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry for your loss.
You can do a follow-up between the two of us, maybe we can learn a little more.
Okay, alright.
Thank you very much.
I can let Barbara know, probably tomorrow? Okay.
Barbara knows my whereabouts all the time, so, yeah.
Alright, thank you very much.
I know, I, I provide anesthesia for many, many transplant recipients, and it's always nice to get a letter. You know, you're up all night doing something and kind of go, oh, I was up all night, and then a little bit later, you get a letter from you guys and, you know, and it tells how, how it came to be and all that, and, or maybe we're doing a donation and I'm, you know, helping provide for a donation, and then they say, these organs were sent to this person and that person and that person. It's, it's really nice.
It's always nice after a tragedy that something good comes out of it.
Yeah, makes you feel like something good came out of it. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
That's what I'm looking for.
Yes, hopefully.
Thank you.
Okay, item number two is a presentation by our new third district county supervisor, Dawn Rao. Please come forward and let us know what you're all about and who you are.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Thank you for having me, and I should start by offering my condolences for your loss. I'm very sorry. It's an honor to be here tonight. I've had the pleasure of working with Ovi over on the airport, and I don't really have a presentation. I just wanted to come and introduce myself, tell you a little bit of background with me and some of the different things that I interact with and do now at the county level. I, born and raised in Southern California. My late husband was a marine officer, which took us all over. We landed in 2003 in the high desert. We lived in Yucca Valley, and on his second deployment to Iraq, he was killed. And so the children were three and five at the time, and we decided to stay in Yucca Valley for a number of different reasons. And then I began, my background and education was in journalism and marketing, stayed-at-home mom for a while with the kids, and then transitioned into developing and land use, became frustrated with that process, introduced myself to our then-mayor Chad Mays and Assemblyman Paul Cook, went to work for Paul part-time and remained with him on staff for about 10 years until I took over in this, and worked with thoughtful development on how we sort of ease, ease the burden of rural development and be thoughtful about that. So that was really what motivated me to run for council. I served four years on the Yucca Valley Town Council. My kids, that were cute, became wild teenagers, so to speak, and decided to spend some time at home with them, getting them off to college. I have them both in college now, so fingers crossed. My daughter's a freshman, my son is a sophomore, and it presented me with the opportunity to have some time to dedicate to either going to work for Congressman Cook full-time or something else. And so I decided to apply for the appointment, and since I had had local experience on the council and worked with the assembly and Congress, I figured this was something that overlapped and never quite intersected directly, and that I would apply and see where things took me. So I represent 11 cities in the third district, and we have the most unique district because we have mountains, we have desert, and we have the metro valley area, and all of the issues are different and unique, and the constituents are as varied as the issues. So it is an awful long drive, which I don't mind making. I come down every morning typically, at least four days a week, getting to know the areas that I'm less familiar with, and trying to get out to Barso and Big Bear and 29 Palms tomorrow for Rotary and all that. So I'm in my car a lot, trying to get out in front of different groups, and I really just wanted to come tonight and let you know a little bit about who I am and that if you ever need anything, I am available. Mayor Rigsby has made his intentions clear of some of the projects that he'd like to see. Give me 12 years and I'll work on that. But it is a pleasure to work with Ovi and some of the different boards that we all sit on together. The Airport Authority is probably the most interesting by far with San Bernardino International Airport in our, in our jurisdiction, and some of the great things that I think that we, as a county and our partners with the cities, can do to further the economic development that, that could bring in and does bring to the county. So it is a pleasure to be here. I'm happy to answer any questions and always available if you need anything. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is our consent calendar. Are there any items you'd like to poll, or is there a motion for the entire consent calendar? Move the consent calendar. Okay, there's a motion and a second, any discussion? JARB will be delighted to have this passed because it's mostly public works. So, okay, is there any opposition? Hearing none, the consent calendar is approved unanimously. Congratulations, JARB. Next is our old business, item 15. This is a second reading of Council Bill O-2019-03, adding Chapter 17.96 to the Loma Linda Municipal Code pertaining to installation of basically 5G in the city. So, city attorney.
I don't really have anything to add to our previous staff report and public hearing. This is the second reading and roll call vote to put into effect some basic design standards and guidelines consistent with federal law that allows us a little bit of discretion, but not that much. So we're doing what we can to oversee these installations within the city and recommend approval.
Okay.
Last round of robust discussion we had, I'll move it, robust discussion last week. I do have one question of the city manager after their support for the motion.
I'll second. Okay, then the motion is to read by title only and call for a roll call vote.
It's entitled, An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, California, Adding Chapter 17.96 to the Loma Linda Municipal Code Pertaining to the Installation of Wireless Small Cell Technology Within the Public Right-of-Way, and Amending Chapter 9.02 to Add Definitions and Amending a Portion of Chapter 17.95 to Clarify Applicability. And you may vote.
All right, do you want to have a comment first?
No, I, I just want to clarify. I think last night you were telling me that you've, I, first of all, if you have a street with streetlights alternating on either side of the street, how many of those poles, is it every other, is it every fifth? How many of those poles are going to have this?
I, I don't know yet, because what happened is they, they, the phone company had to come up with the location of the streetlight pole that they want to, to install this, this, this receiver. So, and, and...
Who has to come up with that?
Like Verizon, Time Warner.
Okay, okay.
It's just like three or four of them.
Okay.
So my plan is, I will have a map showing all the streetlight location, and I will work with each one to make sure that they not put one next to one another. So if Verizon put one here, I will make sure that AT&amp;T will put one over here so that they have to increase, replace our streetlight with the LED light.
Okay. And the follow-up question, that's what I understood. So it, the frequency will be determined by the provider?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And as these, these 5G poles are put in, it's not, anyway, the, the alternate poles that do not get the new equipment, it'll be the city's responsibility to change the lights in those poles in order to ensure that, that there's consistency down the street.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Because some of our streets already have LEDs, some of them are waiting for LEDs.
Correct, correct.
Okay, and, and so is the schedule that as LED lights are put in with, with the 5G, that will make priority?
Yes.
Out of the alternate?
Yes.
Okay.
So what happened right now is, is where things work is when the light bulbs go out.
Yeah.
The city will replace it, the city staff will replace it with a new light bulb with the LED.
Yeah.
And then we also have funding in the Street Light Assessment District.
Yeah.
That every year, we, we budget money to replace the light bulbs.
Okay.
So, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Has everyone voted? I pass this unanimously, thank you.
Okay, then we move to item number 16, Council Bill R-2019-09, adopting the fiscal year list of projects funded by SB 1.
The first one, please? Here you go, yes, this is the one. Okay, back in April 28, 2017, the governor did sign a Senate Bill 1, which is a gas tax for the purpose of road maintenance and for local, state, and street system. And every year, the, the city have to present the street that we plan to rehab and, and for the city council to review and approve first, and then we will send it to the state. So for next fiscal year, 2019, '20, out of SB 1 funding, we plan to do the following street. The first one is Shepperson Street between Mao and Benton. This is Pablo Street between Shepperson and Prospect. Bell Air from Shepperson to, to the end, which is just north of Barton Road, we have Taylor and Lamar Street. Now, because we already received about $400,000 from SB 1, we don't have enough money to do just by SB 1 only. So what I did on this particular location is I combined it with the CDBG money, which we receive about $112,000 a year for next fiscal year. So this will be combined with the CDBG. This part down here is, this is Lawton, and this is the Huron Street, where we replaced the water main last year, and for next fiscal year, we plan to replace the water main down on Richmond, Bell Air, I forget the name of the street here, Hellcrest, Acacia, Crestview, and, and, yes. So what happened is we will upsize the, the water main from six inch to eight inch, using money from the water fund and water development mitigation fund, and then use SB 1 money to pave this road. So after we completely put in the new water main, then we will grind and pave the street. Okay? So what the staff recommended is that the city council approve the, the list of the street for next year SB 1 funding. And then the next slide, I will show you what we plan to do next year for the other funding source, so...
Were you done with your presentation, or no?
Well, this is, okay, I will go ahead with, this is SB 1.
I have a question about SB 1.
Yes.
Are you afraid that our housing performance will cause the governor to withhold our SB 1 funds?
I, I, I don't know. Okay, this is what happened, since you brought it up. Right now, but what they're planning to do is they're planning to increase it, they want to double it. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and, and by doing so, if, if the, the city don't need that, he's threatening, he hasn't said it yet, that he's going to take away SB 1 money, which is, that's why we went to the voter and said, no, you cannot take that money away from the pavement rehabilitation. But I, I can't, I, I don't know. You asked the wrong person.
Did, did we expect truth? I didn't.
Okay, I only heard it from SBCTA staff, so, so, and I asked them to present it again at a city manager technical advisory committee meeting at SBCTA next month, and they should bring it over to the, to the board, too.
Best we can hope is he gets kidnapped while he's in Guatemala or wherever the heck he's at.
Well, people won't kidnap someone for whom there is no desire to pay ransom.
That's a good point.
You like Newsom?
Okay. So, next year, in addition to the SB 1 funding source, we also have successive agency bond proceed that is remaining funding. We have Caltrans/Regional Transportation Development Impact Fee, and we have the Measure I funding for the, the transportation. So next fiscal year, we plan, as part of, we already started this year by using a Caltrans $1 million grant from them. We're going to widen the I-10 freeway eastbound and outbound off-ramp at I-10 and Mountain View. The project is, is under construction. The Caltrans is in the process of reviewing some metal for the traffic signal, the asphalt, concrete, and so forth, so it's in the, in the, in the process with Caltrans. The first task out of the field will be part-holding existing utility over at Mountain View and I-10 freeway, so there might be a traffic control and traffic backup during construction. Next, I'm looking at, again, I have to bring all this back for you to approve. I'm, I'm just presenting what my plan, my plan is. We would like to request a, a, put in the median on Redlands Boulevard between Anderson and Mountain View. The median will be similar to the one that we did in front of VA Hospital, where, where we put in rock median over here, a hardscape with some, what's the word, what's the plant called, the cactus? That are less maintenance. Okay? And in addition to that, we would like to put in the streetlight in the median, because the Redlands Boulevard is pretty wide, and at night, it's get pretty dark, so I would like to add more lighting along Redlands Boulevard. The funding for, for this project will be the, the bond proceed money. Next, we plan to do a pavement rehabilitation on, on Anderson Street from, from Stewart Street to Barton Road. A couple of years ago, we did Redlands, and we did Anderson from Stewart all the way to Redlands Boulevard into the freeway. In addition to just grind and overlay Anderson with rubberized, I mentioned to you earlier a couple of months ago about the, the roundabout at Mao and Anderson Street. I'm still working on that. We just retained a traffic engineer that specialized in, in designing a roundabout to review my design, to make sure that everything work. So, and I will come back to you for approval and then, and then construction. Next, with the, the Measure I funding, we would like to do a pavement rehabilitation, again grind and overlay with rubberized asphalt on Barton Road between Campus and Benton Street. I would do that on both sides, on the median island, so that's our plan for, for next fiscal year. Again, we don't get a lot of money. We, about $400,000 for SB 1. The, the bond proceed, we, we have about close to $2 million left, but at the same time, I don't want to spend all of it. In addition to, in addition to planning to use SB 1, I also working with SBCTA to see if I can use some of their money, just like we did on Redlands, California. If, if they approve it, I could use that money for, for the roundabout and then use the remaining bond, bond proceed for other projects. So that's my plan. Caltrans, I mean, I-10 and Mountain View, we received a $1 million grant from Caltrans. We budgeted about $200,000 from the regional traffic development mitigation fund, and then Measure I, we also received about $400,000, but because we have some money carryover for, for, for this year, so we have about $700,000. so we have about seven hundred thousand dollar for Measure I to spend for next fiscal year. So that's my report for pavement rehabilitation for, for next fiscal year.
How many streetlights do you anticipate putting in on Redlands Boulevard?
I, I did the estimate, I should know this, it's about probably fourteen. We, right now, the streetlight is on, on Redlands, because it's so wide, it's kind of across from one another. So we're gonna put this in between. And we, we're gonna have similar to Barton Road Street, like we have a dual light coming, coming out. So for, for SB one, staff recommended the city council approve, adopt the Council Bill R twenty nineteen dash zero nine. Thank you.
Okay, I'll move it.
Yeah, there's a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, is there any opposition? Hearing none, that is approved unanimously. Item number seventeen is authorize termination of the Animal Housing Service Agreement with the City of San Bernardino, because they are closing their animal housing.
They, they have not, Mr. Mayor and Councilman, they have not, uh, told us yet that they are closing. However, we understand they are in negotiations with Riverside County.
Riverside City.
Riverside County.
It's county.
Riverside City contracts with the county, um, for animal control and sheltering. The, we, actually, when we started the animal control program, we looked at Riverside County for our shelter. Um, we looked at the City of Redlands and, and, uh, San Bernardino. Riverside County was a little bit less expensive, Redlands was the most expensive. Um, however, it, that's out in, in Harupa Valley, it's on Pedley Road, way back on the backside of Riverside. So for our residents to go out there, pick up their animals, deal with the, the type of stuff that happens at the shelter, or for our staff to drive out there at the end of the day and try and get back here with sheltering animal, it really just isn't feasible for us. Um, we started talking to Redlands about three months ago when this, this first came out. Um, over the last five, six years that we've been with San Bernardino, um, there's been a five percent a year cost escalator, and it's to the point where San Bernardino with the cost escalators is about what Redlands is looking at to charge us for the sheltering now. So it's, it's price competitive, it really is very local, um, it's a good, it's a good well-run shelter, um, and it'll, it'll keep that service close to our residents to where it'll be useful. So, um, staff recommends you approving the agreement. Any questions?
Just, go ahead.
I was just saying, I know we've talked about Redlands before, but it's always been a cost issue. But, um, I, I gotta say that we all have been kind of painted with the San Bernardino brush, because we've been contracting with them for the last couple of years. And, um, I, I am not happy with how they have run that shelter, um, especially as an animal lover, and I'm sympathetic to, to some of the cause and some of the, the, the stuff that's been going on over there. So, um, personally, as I say, I'm kind of glad to be done with the shenanigans of the City of San Bernardino and, um, welcome, City of Redlands, so. Glad for this in a roundabout way, and I know it was more of an economic issue that forced it, but.
Thank you.
Do you happen to know how many animals within a particular year do we find ourselves sending to a shelter?
We do about three hundred animal days. So what happens is an animal will get pounded, it'll end up at the shelter sometimes for ten days or two weeks before it's either adopted out or in the San Bernardino shelter before it's destroyed. Um, what we impound is about thirty to forty per year. So, um, it's not, it's like one a week, once every, one, maybe.
So how much is the cost per animal?
My goodness.
Um, trying to remember the exact cost per day, it's something like thirty-eight dollars per animal per day or something.
Yeah, but what is this, thirteen thousand dollars for a month and a half?
It is the, uh, actually, it, it's an annual, there's shelter improvement fee, so there's.
Have to, just for the public knowledge, um, we are pretty creative here, and I have heard rumor that the animal control officer and the assistant animal control officer who's standing in front of us, um, will often take a, a animal home with them to forego fees and things like that. So I know we do things.
That's what we should do then, you know?
Or we could bring them to your house.
We, we have been known to take them home, or if it's late at night or in the evening, to keep them in the truck or keep them warm, and then repatriate them. Also, if they're tagged or licensed or we know where they're at, um, we have been known to put them back in the backyard and lock the gate and, um, deal with the owners that way, because it's, it's traumatic for the animal, it's traumatic for the owner. So our primary goal is to repatriate, not to impound.
Yeah, sounds for that, for that price, I did the math, that's twenty-six hundred dollars per animal, assuming that's for forty a year. Seems like for that price, we should have our own shelter.
We are, we are paying for capacity, and to manage a shelter needs to have a veterinary on, veterinarian on staff, onsite. Um, staff to manage it, you can't just lock them up and leave them alone, somebody has to be there for portions of the day. Um, it becomes, it's almost what, what's involved with running a jail.
Yeah, well, how much does it cost to take an inmate to jail? Twenty-six hundred dollars?
A lot. So there's, there's.
This is, this is more than we're spending on homeless.
And, and as far as your question about the, the twelve thousand, um, it, San Bernardino had the same fee. It is a shelter improvement fee, um, they collected that from us each year, I, I don't know what they've improved, but, um.
So it's like, it's like the, the annual maintenance fee on a timeshare.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So there, there is that improvement fee. Redlands does have a history, though, of, of keeping their shelter in very good repair, and they have, have done periodic expansions in the past.
They're very active with, uh, adoptions and things like get them out of the shelter and that.
Were they not big enough to accommodate San Bernardino's needs?
Um, I don't know if they engaged each other or not.
Seems like they should have gone there, too.
Go ahead.
So if I have a dog that gets loose and has to get picked up and is taken to Redlands Animal Shelter, um, when I go pick him up or her up, am I gonna have to pay a fee as an, as a owner, animal owner?
You will pay some type of, if it's not licensed or vaccinated, you will. Um, the licensing and vaccination fee. Um, there is also a, you will be cited and/or fined for an animal at large, so that.
Animal what?
An animal at large, loose. Um, so that, that will be part of the fee, but a boarding fee is not part of that.
Does that fee emanate from the City of Loma Linda or from Redlands?
The animal at large, yeah, that's a, that's a violation.
Is that a Loma Linda violation?
It's a Loma Linda violation.
And the, and the vaccination fee is paid to Redlands, since they're doing the vaccination?
The vaci, the vaccination fee is to Redlands, the licensing fee comes back to us.
Okay.
Oh, oh, Petco, to get vaccination, you know, you paid a vet, so.
Yeah.
Okay, the other question is, so for a couple of months, we're looking at thirteen thousand plus, uh, per month. Uh, and then we're looking at, uh, basically fifty-six hundred a month. And then it jumps next year to eight thousand a month.
So what, what you're seeing is, the thirteen thousand is the annual shelter improvement fee. So that's not a monthly.
Is that amortized?
No, that's a one-time-a-year fee.
Okay, so, uh, so when we're looking at the eight thousand, is that the differential between the fifty-six and the eight thousand? Is we've built in the, what is it, animal housing fee?
No, the, the fifty-six is a partial month, because we have to give San Bernardino thirty days notice. We'll be giving them notice tomorrow if you approve this.
Okay.
So we'll have to pay for a partial month, and then the eight thousand is a regular monthly fee.
You sure you don't want to go into business?
I do, no, I don't want to chase any more dogs. I'm already in the animal control business, every third, every third weekend.
All right, thank you.
And he's really tired of housing all those skunks.
Do you need a movement? I'll move the item.
Hold a second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, is there any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously, so San Bernardino is losing a revenue stream.
Thank you.
Are there any reports of councilmen? Any reports of officers?
I don't have a report, but I'm, oh, officers, you're gonna report to them on the.
Councilman first.
Freeway interchange and so forth? Yeah, well, yeah, I know, but you didn't describe it, it's gonna widen it, and, and the weed abatement is going to, those are the things that I want the public to know about, especially the weed abatement.
Yes, what, what councilmen, they, they talk about is, is the, uh, the million, one million dollar grant that we receive from Caltrans is to widen the eastbound and westbound off-ramp by one lane. So for example, if you're coming off, going eastbound on I ten, wanna get off at Mountain View off-ramp, right now it's kind of two lane, and, and, uh, one going left, going, or northbound, and another one is going south. But a lot of time is we have a truck parked there, a blocking hole in the section, so the people that want to go southbound cannot go, so they end up driving on the gravel road, a shoulder. So what we're doing is we're gonna widen, add additional lane on the south side, so that the people that want to turn right will get a free movement to go, turn right and coming south onto, uh, into Loma Linda. And, and there's still two lane, one going left, which is north, one goes straight onto the, the freeway. So that'll be eastbound off-ramp. For the westbound off-ramp, right now, we have, again, kind of one lane, one and a half lane. So people that want to turn right, which go northbound, have to drive on a shoulder, and so people are just stuck. So what we plan to do is, we plan to add twelve feet, which is one lane, to the north, and all this still within the Caltrans right of way, and, and add additional lane so that the truck movement, they want to go north on, on, on Mountain View can have a turning movement to the north, and then the traffic that goes south on, to come to Loma Linda, they can have a traffic signal that can turn. The, uh, the projects are awarded to the contractors. We already had a meeting, a permit from Caltrans, we already had a pre-construction meeting with the contractor and Caltrans. So the next step is to, uh, submit all the submit all for a traffic signal, the type of asphalt that we're gonna use, uh, the type of traffic control plan for the construction. We have to, and, and all the rock that we plan to use for hardscaping, we have to submit that to different division for approval, even though they already approved the whole plan, completed plan. So, but inspector of each division had to review and prove each one, so that is in the process. The first task out in the field will be the contractor come, come out and pothole existing utility, because as part of this improvement, there will be a cash basin and storm drain on the north side of the freeway to intercept the water, additional water from that lane, go into the cash basin and tie to existing storm drain in Mountain View. So have to cross couple existing utility, so we have to pothole it first to make sure that everything is okay. That will be the first task. Uh, we have been trying to work with Caltrans to see if we can do this work at night, so that will help with the traffic, uh, backing up during the day, so that's my work.
What about the north side, uh, the San Bernardino side of the, of the freeway?
Yes, sir.
The westbound and, and, uh, eastbound, or.
That's on ramp.
On ramp is westbound, off ramp is eastbound.
That one, we, we not plan to do anything. Other than hardscaping, right now, on, on the, on the north side of the freeway, it's kind of weed growing, so we can remove all the weeds, we can put the weed barrier down, and we'll put the, the rock, colored rocks grow.
And, because in the mornings, when I have some obligation out of Loma Linda that's west.
Yes.
It will back up, uh, it'll back up all the way to, uh, Redlands Boulevard at times, people waiting to go north and then west.
Yes.
On the freeway.
Yes.
And so I'm trying to understand why we wouldn't be trying to address that problem at the same time.
And the reason for that is, is Caltrans put in signal. Even though this is a meter that only limit the timing of the, the car going on the freeway one at a time.
That's getting on the freeway.
Correct, on freeway.
I'm talking about when you're under the freeway.
Yes.
If you're going north, turning left to go westbound.
Yes.
Okay, the traffic backs up from the light on, on the north side of the freeway all the way back up to Redlands Boulevard, and if Southern California Edison's out there, it backs up a lot further than that.
And, a- again, because Caltrans control, control the timing of the vehicle getting on the freeway. So if they're letting go, then the car movement in, in the locals, we move faster.
And, and just for your clarification, Ron, I believe those lights there at, at the overpass are Caltrans lights, and we cannot change the timing on them.
We, we work with them, but.
You've done that before.
Well, they, they take precedence, they'll listen to us and then overrule us. But I, my understanding is this will not improve that on ramp at all.
No, it would not, that's my concern.
Yeah, and it's.
That's my concern.
And it won't help the traffic flow when the on ramp is the issue.
Right.
So it does help reduce the conflict.
Yes.
And it, there may be additional time for that left-term movement.
Yes.
Because of the reduced conflict coming off the freeway, uh, westbound.
Yes.
But that, we would only know by looking at the traffic study. Does the traffic study show any improvement?
And, and what we did, we, we, we did work with Caltrans and IBD helped pay for the study to put in a loop ramp, similar to what we did on, on Anderson and I ten, and typically with I ten. We did the study, we did all of that. But the construction cost is gonna be like fifty million dollar, fifty to sixty million, of which they say that City of Loma Linda, based on Nexus study that was done many years ago, City of Loma Linda responsible for seventy percent. And I said, I don't think so, but.
It's our people waiting to get on the freeway.
Well, we, that's why we're not gonna do that until a new Nexus study and a new Measure I.
Correct.
The third version.
So what, what's that gonna do for us that we don't know already? I mean, I, I'm sitting in the traffic.
Yes.
So I know, I inch up to that freeway.
But my, my question is, does the, does the reduced conflict because of the off-ramp improvement, does that improve the on-ramp performance? Does it lengthen the green light to turn left? Because that's the problem, the light's too short.
Well, it's not only that, but trucks get across and sit there, too.
Yeah, but that part is the reduced conflict that we're looking at, we're trying to see reduced conflict.
Hopefully.
Uh, that's what my goal is, to, to reduce the conflict. Other than redoing the whole interchange, it's gonna be way difficult there, so.
Yeah, and, and like, and like we've said before, the problem is, we have partially fixed the problem at Mountain View. So when the next Measure I comes around, we'll be lower on the fix list, because we're partially fix. If we were just horrendously backed up, we would be high on the list the next time around, but that's after all of us are buried.
Yeah, that's my concern.
And it's funny you mention that, because I had the same conversation you just had with, uh, Jarb just earlier this evening, because I still wanted understanding is how fixing those off-ramps is gonna fix the problem. Because the problem for us is from the off-ramp, getting onto the freeway all the way down to Redlands Boulevard. And it seems to be getting worse, not better, so.
Correct, it, it is, it is worse before, because, because a lot of time is a truck going northbound to stop right in the middle intersection, so my goal is.
To time those lights, because I think the light, timing of the lights might have a big factor in it, so.
Well, but the drive, the trucks, they just flagrantly disregard the lights, and they block the intersection, that's the problem.
Well, I mean, I'll take half good news, uh, I'd like a hundred, I'm greedy, I'd like a hundred percent good news, and it, it still doesn't make sense to me, but, uh, I would, I would urge, I understand our SBCTA, uh, member has significant influence, so I would urge him to become obnoxious in the meetings about this.
Yeah. But the problem is, it's, it's the Nexus, it's, the, the funding for Mountain View fell below the funding line for the current measure.
It's like, what, a twenty-year projection or something?
Yeah, because it goes through twenty, thirty, that, that Measure I, and all the money that's anticipated to be raised by that tax is already committed to projects that were higher priorities than Mountain View. So Mountain View is not in the funding horizon for that. So they have to pass a new measure, and then do a new Nexus study, and do a ne, a new, you know, need study to find out. And what I was pointing out is the fact that we partially fixed the intersection, it will end up on that study slightly lower in the priority list, because it's not as bad as it would have been otherwise. So we're, we're buying a little bit of time, but we're forestalling the permanent fix by doing this. We're making it later.
Just for the record, this is all part of the discussion on an item that's already passed, just in case anybody wonders. Because technically, we're not supposed to discuss anything after the meeting, and we're discussing fifteen minutes worth of stuff, from a Brown Act perspective. We're solely supposed to discuss items that's on the agenda.
No, this is, this is.
I was asking for a report.
This is reports of officers and reports of councilmen, this is on the agenda.
Yeah, but we're, 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 we're getting into, technically, it's a discussion.
So you're becoming a Brown Act hound?
No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm trying to make sure we don't get in trouble. I'm attaching this to an item on the agenda, that's all I'm saying. Having said that, I don't think we should worry about worrying about the priority of sandbag. Clearly, that's not helping us, so we need to start looking for alternative ways. Clearly, that's not helping us, so we need to start looking for alternative ways to fix that intersection and not wait for sandbag. I think we need to look into that.
Fifty million dollars?
No, I am not, I'm not buying that, I, I'm sure there's a way to do it, and we got congressmen, we got all sorts of people that should be able to help us access funds. So I think we should do that, I don't want to wait for sandbag another twenty years.
Congressmen that are in favor of?
Heck, we have a, we have a new Assemblyman that should have some sway with Caltrans.
Oh, we got, we got a congressman that's on the majority now, so maybe he can get something done.
I think we're more likely to get homeless housing than this. Ah, priorities. Okay, so anything else for reports of officers or councilmen? Okay, then the city council is adjourned, and we have two more agendas. Starting with the successor agency, are there any items to be added or deleted to that?
No, sir.
Agenda? Okay, would the public like to speak on any items? And that is one, one member of the public, he's shaking his head, so. Uh, the consent calendar. There's a motion, a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, is there any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously, that agenda is adjourned. Now we go to the housing authority, any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any reports from the public? No takers, uh, the consent calendar? Okay, there's a motion, a second, any, uh, further discussion? Hearing none, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously, any member reports? Any reports of officers? Hearing none, we're adjourned. That's the last of our agendas for tonight, thank you for coming. Please go and spend gobs of money in the next six minutes.
Speaking of that, can you get some clarity, is the, uh, farmer's market-
Our farmer's-
Once a month, or every Tuesday? Because we're here one Tuesday, and they weren't there.
Well, it's because the winter time, there was bad weather, lots of rain.
Ah, okay, so that's, okay, all right, thank you for that clarity.